Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Monday, August 21st Board of Alderman Meeting. The first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So do.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Any corrections or revisions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters not on the agenda. So I'll ask that you wait to be called on to speak. And when you're called, that you walk to the podium. You state your name and town of residence and you speak into the mic so that Peg TV can capture your audio. First up, we have Lyle Jepson and Crispin White from Cedar with an update and request related to the Second Annual Whoopee Pie Festival.
Thank you very much for having us. I looked around the room and realized that we're only the city attorney that doesn't know that whenever she sees me, I'm asking for money. Lyle Jepson, I'm asking for money. And we are excited to point out that the Second Annual Whoopee Pie Festival will be happening on Saturday, September 16th. And the person that knows everything about that, I told, I would do the hard part. We would love to have a continued sponsorship from the city of Rutland. Last year, the mayor contributed $5,000 towards the Whoopee Pie Festival, which we very much appreciate it. There are a lot of expenses that go along with putting on a festival that will bring as many people as Crispin will talk to you about. So no pressure to the current mayor, but we would love to have a continued sponsorship. He can certainly raise that if he would like to do that, but we would not suggest that. If we were to receive a sponsorship in the same amount, which was $5,000 last year, we would be very excited. But before you even entertain that, I think it would be great if you heard from Crispin, who can tell you all the different events that are going to take place, how it's growing this year, and how we hope that it will continue to grow in the future. So if it's okay, Crispin can tell you all about that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Crispin White. Is it okay that I hand these out?
Of course.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you. As Lyle mentioned, our Second Annual Whoopee Pie Festival will be Saturday, September 16th, from 12 to 5 in downtown Rutland. Again, we are looking for a bigger event. Last year, we brought in about 2,500 people to the event. And we're looking to expand it and increase the number of people to come down and visit downtown Rutland. Last year, we had the Parade of Heroes that celebrated the essential workers who worked during the pandemic. This year, we will not have that, but we're going to have a lot more activity. And what we did last year was incredible. We had a baker partner, Dream Maker Baker, create a 542-pound Whoopee Pie. Imagine that. So this year, we're going to have a lot of family-friendly activities. We're going to have magicians, jugglers, a bouncy house, dunk tank. We're going to have face painters, caricature artists. And we're just going to create this fun atmosphere for families and people downtown Rutland. We're also going to have a green street, which is going to be put in front of Wonder Feet. And it's going to be a 100-foot by 50-foot piece of sod that we're going to have activities on there, from Rutland Rec, Come Alive Outside, and quite a few more. And the opportunity we're hoping to present to the community is come down and have fun. Enjoy yourselves, laugh, eat a lot of Whoopee Pies, and really come together as a community. What we found out last year is we had people not only from Rutland County, but throughout the state and outside of the state as well. And we're looking to do the same thing this year. But one thing we're also adding is we're going to have tents available from our nonprofit partners to share information and resources to our residents who come down to the festival. So we're going to have United Way, WIC, New Story, and a few others who are going to come down and just share information. Because we want to make sure that this is a community event. So we're going to have fun, but share as much information as we can as well. Now, one thing you might be asking yourself is, what do you do with all this Whoopee Pie after the fact? And we're working with a lot of locations right now to distribute the Whoopee Pie the following week. We have two locations that will provide us with a freezer that we're told that Whoopee Pies freeze very well. So we're going to freeze it and distribute it the following week. And this year, the goal is to create a 700-pound Whoopee Pie. So that is the goal of Dream Maker Baker. They're actually looking towards the world record, which is 1,062 pounds. So we're hoping to accomplish that in the next few years. But we are looking for the support of the city to help us continue this. And again, and similar to Friday Night Lives and all the events that happen in downtown Rutland, we're hoping that this will be another event that will bring people down. People can engage with each other, have fun, enjoy themselves, and just get past some of the challenges and the wet weather we've had over the summer. So any questions about the Whoopee Pie Festival?
Questions from members of the board? Alderman Kupali?
You're going to have the parade.
We're not going to have the parade this year. So last year, we ran the festival from 12 noon to about 9:30 because we had the parade. We had music and we had fireworks at the end. This year is going to be a shorter event from 12 to 5.
Thank you.
Do you invite Peg TV to film the event, sir?
We invite Peg TV. We invite all of the regional TV stations and radio stations, including Vermont Public. So we're going to have a lot of coverage down here, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions from members of the board?
Are you guaranteeing good weather?
Since this is being recorded, yes. Yes, I am.
Under the tent.
Before you ask for any more questions, I do want to thank Kim Peters and Rutland Rec for everything they did for us last year. And in anticipation, thank you again for everything you're going to be doing. Also wanted to thank the Department of Public Works. They did not know that they were going to have the street sweeper out that very next morning to pick up that extra sod that was out there on the road. So we appreciated their help. And there was a gentleman there, and I can't remember his name, but he was there for like three hours. And he made sure that the streets were really clean, and we appreciate that.
And we were proactive this year, so we have that already scheduled. So thank you. Already scheduled.
And also, our signature sponsor is Heritage Family Credit Union. And great support also from Casella Waste and many others, so thank you.
All right, seeing no additional questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I think we have some folks from Partners in Prevention here to address the board.
Hi, my name is Heather Brilliard. I'm the Regional Prevention Partnership Coordinator with Rutland Regional Medical Center and Partners for Prevention. We are a grant-funded program focusing on tobacco, vaping, cannabis, and alcohol prevention for youth and young adults ages 12 to 25. I came to you about a year ago to bring awareness about a project that we had going on with Vermont After School called the VYP 2.0 Project. So this project is focused on third space enhancement and creation in Rutland County, and is bringing about $40,000 into our community to be able to focus on the needs of our youth. The first step in this project was to get information from the youth about what they like in our community and what they want to see in our community. And really, the focus is to get that youth perspective. So we were really lucky this summer to host two youth interns. And I'm very excited to introduce Grayson Skaza. So Grayson is a senior at West Rutland High School. And she just started her early college program at Vermont State University Castleton Campus. And we have Emma Cosgrove. She is a senior at Rutland High School. And she is a student as a part of the engineering program at Stafford Technical Center. So they're going to tell you all about the great work that they've been doing this summer.
Hi there. So as part of our internship, we've been going to different youth groups. We've met with roughly 13 of them. And we've been having open discussions with them. The main three things we've been talking to them about are, what do you want to see in your community? What do you feel like you need from your community in order to feel a part of it or to better be an active participant of it? And how do you think we could develop third space in the community? So we have a couple of main points that we kept on repeatedly seeing from the kids. One of them was they really want a safe place to socialize as they felt after COVID, their safe socialization places left. So they don't really have anything to do, and they feel like they don't have a way to connect with the community. So one thing was the kids were very active about wanting a teen club center, kind of similar to how there's Wonder Feet for the elementary students. Another one that we repeatedly heard was safe transportation. As many of the kids we interviewed didn't have access to a car or any ways to get to places in the community. We repeatedly heard multiple of them say, like, either my only options are to walk or use the bus. And for some of them, just walking through Rutland by themselves isn't possible or it doesn't feel safe for them. In addition, many of them don't feel safe using the bus by themselves as they've had experiences that have really rubbed them the wrong way or made them feel unsafe. And then, an additional one is wanting to feel like there are events targeted towards them at community events. To kind of feel like, a lot of them have brought up that they felt like they don't technically feel wanted in the community or they don't feel like there's someone trying to actively engage them with it. And there's a couple of reasons Grayson will touch on that. But they feel like there's not someone actively trying to engage them in the community the same way people would actively try to engage like the middle schoolers or the elementary schools. And the kids we talked to, just so an idea of our age range, is we talked from 10-year-olds to 18-year-olds. So we got like a wide variety of them.
So another problem that we came across was communication between people putting on events and target audience, which is teenagers. And as you all know, social media is a big thing nowadays for teenagers. And our problem was that they weren't seeing our events or our community events. And, you know, you have to know about them before you can get to them. So we worked on kind of tweaking our social media presence a little bit, post more often, and more in their language. And we found an increase in numbers at our events. So if we applied that kind of alterations to every event, we'd see an increase in numbers.
They also brought up a frustration that they are aware that there are platforms in the community for them to voice their opinions, but they don't actually know about those as it's not properly told to them or they don't feel like it's really, they feel like there's like a disconnect in between. Like, they do know there are opportunities for them, but they have no idea when those opportunities are, where they are. And they feel like, or a lot of them were talking about how they didn't know how there's a bunch of programs to help them in the city under like specific things. They felt like there was that real disconnect about learning about all the opportunities that are already in place for them. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for members of the board? Alderwoman McClure?
I would just like to say, as someone who went to school for marketing, you guys did an amazing market research analysis sort of thing with these kids. This is super valuable information that I'm sure everybody in this room will be able to utilize in the future. And I'm super, super glad that Partners for Prevention had awesome kids like you on the team. Not even kids, young adults, young adults like you guys. So thank you very much for your hard work through all of this.
Thank you for that comment.
Of course.
Any other board members with questions?
I just have a question.
Alderwoman Davis?
So do you know, like, recreation opportunities for kids, programming for kids? How much does the schools participate to get information out?
So one thing we were going to try to do with our social media approach throughout this school year to test it is a lot of kids said that they follow their school for like updates on sports events. So what we were going to try to test this school year is partnering with the people who run the school's social media platforms and see if maybe we send them a post about an event. If they can put it in the daily announcements or if they can put it on the, post it on the social media page or at least repost it. So that way, if we send them content, hopefully it'll get into the students' mainstream of information.
Great, thank you.
Alderwoman Tadio?
Thank you for your research and all of your work this summer. Very impressive. I was wondering, did you get any feedback about interest in a skate park locally as a place for people to hang out?
I don't bet. We got interest in ideas of like doing like big recreational outside activities where it was like the kids wanted to get together. And like, we had a bunch where they were like, oh, it would be amazing if we could like get together and do like an outdoor laser tag night or something like that. So there was interest in outdoor activities. It was like competing with like team events and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you, appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us.
Next up, I believe we have two younger community members here to address the board. That's you. You can go after them. Welcome.
I'm Violet Polley.
I'm Laurel Polley. We live on Campbell Road in Rutland Town. And we noticed that the wildlife on Clement Road was crossing the road and what kept getting run over or was very, like, very close to getting run over. And we just wanted to do something about that. Turtles, geese, other animals cross there. We, we help them, but some die. I, me and Laurel have some ideas of maybe things we can do to help. We were thinking maybe putting up like a wildlife crossing sign and maybe like a bigger culvert under the road so that the animals can cross from the pond because they sleep in the pond and they cross the river to eat. We were thinking maybe we could make it so they can cross without getting run over.
Those are good ideas. Very good job.
Alderman Gillum?
Exactly where is this road?
It's near the college.
Oh, St. Joseph's?
Yes.
It's on Clement Road?
Yes.
So it's going from the riverside to the college side?
Yes.
Okay. So I suggest you ask the Alderman to put this in committee because we're going to be planning on doing some paving down there. That could be a suggestion we could fix that at the same time.
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this to Public Works?
Oh, it works.
To the Public Works Committee. And it's been seconded. Any discussion or debate on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Gillum, do you want to explain the process to them?
The process is we have a committee meeting. We bring the commissioner in and hopefully we can put it on his scheduling when we do the paving because I'm pretty sure we're going to be doing some paving down there because that road right now is pretty rough. So that is an excellent idea to put on the docket to add that into the project.
We'll make sure you're invited to the meeting.
Make sure you're invited to the committee meeting. We'll bring you in, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming.
Good job.
So I believe we have another member of the public here to address the board? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Eos Koryk. I live at 105 Robin Street here in Rutland. And you probably know why I'm here. I hope I'm here the last time talking about this issue. Maybe I come again for something that's more important. But since this is still active and didn't, haven't been resolved, then I had to come back. So I know we live in the city that is losing population, and we are trying to get people to live here. And we are trying to get all these tech workers who work remotely to come here and buy properties and live here. Well, let me tell you, I came here in the 90s to work remotely because I also worked as a snowboard instructor at Killington at the same time while running a nonprofit organization in Queens in New York City. And I devised a way to do my job for nonprofit remotely. When this was not yet done by everybody in the country. I invented the way. I had a computer, I had online banking, I did all the accounting and all the web updates and design issues and communication from here. What was the reason and why did I like it here? Okay, like in New York, in New York City where I lived for many years, like in the summers, I would work at a pool company, at a pool maintenance company. I worked in Long Island, I lived in Brooklyn. I commuted 37 miles on Southern Parkway and Belt Parkway, which is a total nightmare. And then, when I came home, I had to drive in the neighborhood to find a parking spot because I, you know, this is how you live in New York City. Here, when I came to Vermont, I had a driveway. Now, in Brooklyn, I also could buy a house, $700,000 to $800,000 at that time, and then I would have a driveway. If I didn't have a driveway, then I couldn't park in front of somebody's driveway because they would call the police to tow my car. So I spent 45 minutes every day, or rather, not me, but my wife, because I didn't want to deal with that, to drive around the neighborhood to find a parking. Here in Vermont, I would come home from work and I would just drive in my driveway. And I got to get a house for a fraction of the price, then I would play in Queens or in Brooklyn for the same thing. Okay? And this was a big, big incentive and big, big reason for me to decide to live remote and work remotely and live here. Yeah, because I didn't have to worry about parking my car, about having to debate this with other people, where can I park? When can I park? You know, I just drove to my home, parked it, and in the morning, I would drive out. And this is why I bought a house. I bought a two-unit with two separate driveways so that I have a driveway for myself and my family, and my tenants have driveway for themselves. Yeah? And this worked nicely since 2005 until now. Why? Because one day, I found a curb blocking that driveway. Why? I have no idea. Nobody, I mean, I knew that renovations are going to happen at 105 Robin Street. I saw people doing paving, removing dirt, and da-da-da-da. So I was up with all that. I just didn't understand that when they are going to put those curbs, those curbs are going to go as far as to block that driveway. I just didn't know why they would be like that because I expected the Department of Public Works knows and sees that this is a driveway and that the curb is going to stop and be cut at the point before it starts. And when I saw that, then I confronted the city with the idea of why? I mean, why did you put, and you know what is the problem and why I'm here now? I've never really got an answer from the city, why the curb goes all the way there. Okay? I actually came last week, I don't know, was it Wednesday? Wednesday, Wednesday morning, I spoke with council and with the Bob Protivansky from the Department of Public Works. They didn't show me a plan. They didn't show me a map. They didn't show me any records, any evidence, you know, that would justify city in having curb extending all over there. The only thing the council showed me was my deed saying that deed doesn't specifically define, yes, deed doesn't specifically define. The zoning department also say that they don't specifically define. There is no specific definition that anybody showed me that this shouldn't be a driveway and which is why I think that we should act upon the information available from the reality on the ground. In last 20 years, this was a driveway. It was used as a parking space. It was used as a driveway and needs to be recognized as such. And if we do that, then this would spare the city going to the lawsuit with me because I already started a court process at the Vermont Superior Court here in Rutland. And why don't we take a vote now to instruct the Department of Public Works to fulfill my wishes, to get this nine-feet of curb removed now so that we don't have to discuss this ever again anymore and the city doesn't have to spend money fighting with me in court over that? This is my proposition.
So let me ask a question.
Alderwoman Davis?
Just clarification. So you have, Mr. Skor, I appreciate your comments, but you have taken a lawsuit. You actively have a lawsuit against the city.
I sent the documents. I didn't, did you receive it already?
Received them just this evening.
So just, so I feel that that's not a discussion at this board any longer?
No, but I'm going to withdraw. It's very easy, you know, and this is not my first lawsuit. So I'm going to withdraw and dismiss if this is resolved.
Alderwoman McClure?
Can I make a motion to refer this into executive session to be discussed at a later date?
I don't see a reason why we can't do that specifically, as far as I'm aware.
It's not a very difficult thing to do.
So is that a motion?
Are you making that?
Yes, I am making the motion, but I was asking if I could make that motion.
I mean, you can do whatever you want.
I would like to make a motion to refer this to executive session to be discussed by the board at a later date.
So we have a motion that has been made? Does it have a second? So seeing no second, we can't vote on the motion?
So I didn't make that motion. I wanted you to vote for now. I mean, the thing is that I don't know why we are procrastinating and delaying with that. I am making a very simple request. I have not been given any reason or justification by the city for why that request could not have, could not be fulfilled. And this is why I am here, because I'm really curious, what prevents the city from acting upon that?
So a couple of things. The charter prevents this board from acting on it, right? So this board has power over municipal matters that it has not specifically delegated to another official. And the board, the charter specifically delegates the authority on this matter to the DPW Commissioner. That's my understanding of the reading of the charter. Further, this board can't take action on anything unless a motion is made, it's seconded, and a majority of the board members, six board members in fact, vote to take action. So that, those two things prevent this board from acting on it. We did listen to you tonight. I appreciate the situation that you're in. A motion was made. No one seconded the motion. We can't vote on it.
I can't make a motion?
You cannot.
Anyway, so the problem is here, the Department of Public Works did not give me any justification for what they did. And I think that I, as a property owner and as a member of the public and as a citizen of this city, have the right to see the maps, the plans, and the reasons why this curb goes there. And I think that if the city wants remote workers to come to live here, then we need to be listened to, I mean, yeah? And we need to be asked for what we really want. And our wishes need to be fulfilled. The Department of Public Works cannot, even if this is city property, where the curb actually sits. If it interferes with me and with my property and with what I need and with what I bought this for, then the city harms me, harms my interest, devalues my property, yeah?
So I understand what you're saying. I understand that this isn't the resolution that you want. You're welcome to come back at our next meeting.
I'm going to be here every, you know, you know the Senator Cato from second century before BCE?
You're welcome to come back at a future meeting and bring this matter up again.
And I don't always.
But tonight, the board has made clear that there is not a will to act on it.
Until the cartage is destroyed, I'm going to repeat, the cartage needs to be destroyed, yeah?
So I'm going to ask that you yield the podium to other members of the public. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Go right ahead.
I'm Larry Walter. I live on 14 Belmont Avenue, not Belmont Avenue Extension, which is where the pizza guy usually ends up trying to find us. I'm here, I've got, this is hot off the press for the Michaels on the Highway Commission, Rutland City Highway Commission, that would be the right?
Board of Highway.
Board of Highway, okay. I just got a note from Jason Williams, who is with the Rutland City Police Department. He's a sergeant and he's on the community response team. And he says he has information that's old, but it's two years old. For the average highway speeds, apparently they had a couple of trip lines on North Main. He didn't say anything about Woodstock, but I thought, instead of me trying to bug him and then trying to get the information to you guys, if you just ask Officer Williams, yeah, Jason Williams, he's a sergeant, for that information, I think it'd be useful. Of course, that's two years ago, it's kind of in the middle of... Of course, that's two years ago, it's kind of in the middle of COVID, so I don't know if traffic would have been up or down, but it might be usable as a way to measure that speed versus, I would hope, somewhere around thirty-five miles an hour if we had a three-lane conversion on North Main and on Woodstock Avenue. And just to remind the board that this is about safety. It's really, well, to me, it's an easy choice, because if it costs you, let's say ninety seconds longer to go from one end of Woodstock to the other, that's worth having a lot, I mean, we talked about safety with our youth today. Well, another part of that equation is the safety to ride your bike to the high school. And that's, I would think, pretty important, or safe, you know, safe enough to walk on the sidewalk without getting splashed by dump trucks. I was reminded of that in a pretty good little rainstorm just the other day, of, you know, I had to hold my umbrella down like a shield when I was walking back from the rock climbing place, you know, out on Woodstock Avenue. It's not fun. So urging you one more time to consider, you know, the three-lane conversion on both those roads, and most, most especially on Woodstock Avenue. That's where we really need that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public here to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor.
All right. Good evening. To start off, so that Lyle can leave here with an answer, I am willing to support the $5,000 out of the mayor's contingency fund for the Whoopi Pi Festival. I do want to add a note that as we move forward and these asks come for marketing events like this, the goal is to, in the FY25 budget, have a line item specifically for marketing, so that these are more, although you can always come and ask, it's a more thoughtful process into how much we will invest into marketing our region and doing marketing-type events over the years. So that's just something we're, but yes, out of the contingency, I'll make sure we get Lyle the 5,000, or Cedar the 5,000 for the Whoopi Pi Festival.
Thank you, but I'm not leaving.
Oh. Stay as long as you like. So what we've done, in the what we've done category, just one thing this week, I just want to put out a huge thanks to everybody that's really kind of put boots on the ground again, you know, with the last flood that we had. So Department of Public Works, the Rutland City Police Department, the Fire Department, City Building Department, everybody's been, not only, not only did they take action on the day of the flooding, but they've been continuing to take action. For example, our fire chief, who's here tonight, continues to work with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to work on FEMA requests and other requests. Right now, it's not a FEMA-designated disaster, but having those conversations to expand. To that, to that end, Senator, I'm sorry, Representative Ballant came down to Rutland City. She toured Clover Street, had conversations with some of the homeowners on that street to see and hear about the damage. And there are people that still do not have power in those homes, because the floodwaters damaged their electrical systems and they can't be turned back on until those are repaired. One resident tells me that repairs upwards of $50,000. So we continue to look for ways to find funds to help solve those problems, look at other programs that are available to try to alleviate those issues. Rutland is built on three different bodies of water, essentially, right? And that is one of the challenges that we have in our city, is we have to constantly be aware of the potential of those rising tides. So just thanks to everybody who put in the effort, and thank you for Representative Ballant for coming down. So what we're currently doing, the transitional housing plan presentation, you'll hear about that a little bit later tonight in the report, but that was given before the board last week. I did want to follow up. The state has reached out. They do believe that they have some funding to go into this plan. They believe that funding will go, based on a very quick conversation, some of it will go to the Rutland Housing Authority or Trust, depending on which way we go there. I'm having a conversation about that either tomorrow, we have it locked in a time, either Wednesday at eight thirty, eight o'clock, or Thursday at night. So those are the two times. But I should have more updates on that next week. What we're going to do next, we've collected all the department head requests for the capital improvement plan. So time to take a couple steps back. On the ballot this year were two things, a 1% option tax and a capital improvement fund. The fund is where we can put some money. The plan is what we decide to invest in and spend towards and save and spend towards. That capital improvement plan and those projects need to be basically put into a database, which I'm working on right now, and then we need to review that. And in order to review that, we have a couple of things that need to be done. So I'm going to request that the board refer to Community and Economic Development discussion of the capital improvement plan and the capital, setting up a capital improvement plan committee.
I'll move. Second.
So we have a motion to refer discussion of the capital improvement plan and capital improvement plan committee to Community and Economic Development, and that has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderwoman Davis?
So some issues are in finance committee, et cetera. So what is your anticipation that the committee will do? Will it take over the role of the finance committee, having a discussion of the 1% to go in certain areas, or will it refer back to, like, community development or finance with recommendations?
Yeah, it'll refer back to. So the idea would basically be to set up a committee that's focused on, on that particular grouping of what projects we're going to put in there, and then kick it to finance. So there's actually, what we did, which is really nice with the GovPilot software, is we have, the finance committee can give feedback in there, and so can the capital improvement plan committee. So there's a lot of moving pieces, so having a way to filter through that is important.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any additional questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. There's another topic that I'd like the board to consider. The Planning Commission currently has five members. Keeping a quorum can be difficult at times if one or two members don't show up. Also, there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the Planning Commission. There's the finishing up of our new zoning bylaws. We have municipal plans coming up and architectural review pieces as well. There are going to be a couple of walking tours over the next few months to review what the new zoning is going to look like and what that, where that needs to land before the Planning Commission decides on what needs to come before the board. So with that being said, the Planning Commission has asked that we expand their number from five members to seven members. Now, nope, it's fine.
I just have a question, but I'll wait.
Alderwoman Davis?
So I'll ask the city attorney, because I'm not sure, is it that simple or is it designated by charter? Like the alderman is, I don't know if the Planning Commission or other commissions are designated for numbers.
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I'd have to look.
Seems like the mayor knows the answer off the top of his head.
I think there's either charter or ordinance that designates numbers.
Actually, no, which was really interesting. And sorry, I had researched this prior to Megan coming on with Matt.
Sorry, I didn't either.
Nope, great. There's no charter or ordinance. There's state legislation that says we have to have a planning commission. Then we have some, we have some data that says how we build it and what structure is, they have to be city residents, because the state said they don't have to, right? So we have some guidelines, but the number of members is not in charter, it's not in ordinance, and it's not in legislation. So go ahead.
So where is the guideline? Is it policy?
So the guideline is just a vote that was made, as far as we found, that was a vote that was made many years ago on the number. So what I'd like to do is I'd actually like to send it to committee, discover if we need to maybe put it in ordinance, or even just say, just like we do with the parking rates, put it on file with the city clerk's office and decide what the right number is. I'm looking for seven, but I think sending it to committee, thinking that out appropriately, and then having a way that we can refer back to that in the future is the best path forward.
I'll move to refer to General Committee.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion to refer expanding the Planning Commission to the General Committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Great. All right. One more request. Coming up on the 26th, I handed out this paper, we're coming up on the 26th of September, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns is having their annual meeting. And I am requesting that the board designate me as the assigned voting delegate for our city memberships for VLCT, pass it in verb, at the upcoming annual business meeting on that Tuesday.
So moved.
All right.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
So Alderwoman Davis has moved to suspend the rules?
Second.
And that's been seconded. Any discussion on suspending the rules? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Alderwoman Hooker has made a motion to.
Delegate the mayor to be the.
Delegate.
Signator.
It's on the sheet.
The representative to the annual meeting at Vermont League of Cities and Towns, representing the city.
Second.
All right. So Alderwoman Hooker has made a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. So last thing, I encourage you all to look into attending the VLCT meeting. There are different classes. You don't have to go for both days. It's worth, you know, it's definitely worth going, from what I've been told. I have yet to go, so this will be my first one. I've also encouraged city employees to go. So VLCT is one of these great agencies in our state that allows us to have different resources and informational things. There is a particular track on public safety this year that I'm really looking forward to, and I think that we benefit from going. So if you can make one or both days, that would be great.
Alderman Gillon?
Is that north or south this year?
It is north this year. It is up north this year. Yep. All right? Great.
Thank you very much.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment on the board.
Yeah, Alderman Gillon.
During the flood, I was in the traffic jam to get to Route Seven. I was appalled, very appalled, where people did not stop for emergency vehicles trying to get to that site, especially the swift emergency vehicles who were trying to get through. It took them two minutes to get through that intersection in front of Christ the King to get down the hill. Nobody would let them in. I really think that we need to get the word out, that people need to pull over when they see emergency management or emergency vehicles or police or whatever going through Route Seven. People need to stop and let them through. I was pretty, pretty angry to see. As a matter of fact, I got out of the car and started yelling at people to get out of the road, and they still would not get out of the road. So that's pretty bad.
I agree. Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move to additions and deletions to the agenda. Chief Kilcullen has requested that we delete the executive session. Are there any other additions or deletions? So I'd entertain a motion to delete the executive session?
So moved.
Second. So we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we move on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First, we have Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with an update on changes to the 120 Maple Street project. There's a memo on page one of your packet. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So in your packet, I have a memo there that states that Hale Resources decided to apply for project-based vouchers at 120 Maple Street for the three units designated for low mod income renters. Therefore, the notice of finding of no significant impact and the request for release of funds had to be re-noticed in the Herald to include that information. This changed the construction start date from September 1st, as previously reported, to October 1st. And it was important to the Hales that the city be apprised of this change and to continue their transparency with this project. And Zach is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have with regard to how this affects the project going forward.
Thanks, Barbara.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Zach Hale, Beddington, Vermont. Yeah, I just wanted to answer any questions. I know I came about a month ago and said we'd start in September 1st, and just wanted to make sure that we were clear, that things are delayed a little bit, but we do expect that we should be able to get the roof done and the siding done and the foundation done before the winter. So we expect that we should be able to work through the winter and keep the project moving once we start.
Are there any questions from board members for Mr. Hale?
I'll move to receive and place on file.
Second.
So we have a motion to receive and place on file, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Fire Chief Lovett with a request regarding a new decontamination shower being installed at the fire station, and a memo should be on your desk. Chief?
Yes, I'm here tonight just to see about the funding of our decontamination shower. We started the project, the station, because between the police, the fire, and also the building inspectors' offices are being exposed to all sorts of nasty elements, so we need to be able to decon outside of the living space of the fire station. So in the process of getting going, we started receiving bills, and the hope had been to draw the money from the opiate award. So went to the Board of Finance, who recommended they come back to the board and recommended it be put in the finance committee for review and to set up a structure that we could draw this fund from.
Very good.
I'll move to refer to finance.
Second.
So we have a motion to refer this to the finance committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good. So we have a finance committee meeting on Wednesday? And maybe we can rewarn that to include this?
So, yeah, I don't know how long we ought to, well, we can, we can do it, because we're going to have the discussion on the funding that's coming in for, for the state. So if I could ask the clerk to add the decamp, decontamination shower to the agenda as well, please. So at 5:30, we have three, Chief Lovett, just so you know, the first one we'll take up is an outside request from the Methodist Church, so we'll do that first, and then we'll move on to these issues. Okay?
Very good. Next up is Recreation Superintendent Peters with summer updates and a proposal for Vermont Achievement Center rec programs. There are documents on pages two to six of your packet. Welcome.
All right. So end of the summer, every three months, I usually do a summary of events, projects, programs that have occurred, and I'm not going to read all four pages, but I do want to highlight a few. And I did send another page of Gothic Adult Center events that, that have happened. So just a few highlights. Our membership at the rec center continues to see an increase, which is great, and, and that's been very steady, including all of our rentals that have happened. So this was a good year to kind of get where, you know, where we are at with our rentals. We're at the point that we're, we're asking previous rentals to get their rental on the book a year ahead of time. So we're, we have definitely turned into a rental facility, both the rec center, the outside pool, and Gothic Adult Center. All of our camps were great. We had a 20% increase, nine weeks, and we almost filled the whole summer, but the Boy Scouts took our last 10th week of a full camp, and Billy is utilizing the Giorgetti complex for that. It was just a great summer. It really was going around and seeing the kids. We, it was, it was a really, it was just such a good, good summer. I just can't even, I can't even explain how great it was. And then we have, on top of our nine weeks, we have different specialty camps that run every week, and those were very successful. Rising Leaders, along with Partners for Prevention, we partner with them. This is a program for our middle school kids. Currently, we can take 20 kids, and that's because of our transportation as well. They do a lot of community service projects, and then the last week, they help with our summer camps, interning with, with them. And that was also very well-attended, and we filled that program up very quickly. Going on to the pool, very rainy year and unpredictable. But we, this year, we changed our focus also on our rentals, and we offered private rentals, and we were filled every Saturday, Sunday. So that also is revenue, but also providing opportunity for that. In fact, Christ the King just did their, their big year jump-off into the school year party on Sunday. I went down and visited, very well-attended. They had over 250 community members come to that. And then I want to just mention our swim team. They won districts this year, so very fun. After COVID, we stopped scoring the, the meet. This is a meet for Southern Vermont, where all the teams come to Rutland for, for the event, and Rutland won by about 30 points, which is a very close margin for a swim team. Gothic Adult Center rentals every weekend. If you drive by the Gothic Adult Center any time of the day, any day of the week, it is full. April and Emily have done a phenomenal job of programming, and they're also at that point that they, they really cannot add much more programming, and the rentals are very successful on the weekends. Talks about their bus trips, and they just recently went to Mount, to the top of Mount Washington on the trolley, and they recorded it when they, it was, I had high anxiety high anxiety about that, but they did very, very well. National Night Out is an event that we, that the rec is very much involved in. Colleen did a phenomenal job working with fire and police, and it was very great weather. So I just wanted to thank them for that. This year, we worked with the USCIS, United States Citizen and Immigration Services, to bring refugees into recreation. So, again, this was something that Colleen, one of our program directors, really spearheaded with, along with Jenny Gardner, was one of our contacts. And we have definitely seen many new faces in the rec, and this is also helping them prepare for the first day of school. So that went really, really well, and it was, we've had a lot of private donors that have also helped pay for that to occur. If you would like any more information, we could talk offline on that, but that's been very successful, and now we're working on getting them into our fall programming. Theater continues to go strong. We had a great summer with them, and our December show will start having auditions very soon. Summer concerts, I want to thank M&amp;T Bank. This is the first year in a long time that we went after sponsorships to help support the summer concerts. I think we only had one cancellation, so the weather was good for us on those days. E-bike rentals continue to increase. You know, the whole goal of this, we have bikes at the rec center, and we have bikes at the Ghanic Adult Center, and those are constantly being rented out free of charge, and the idea is then people go out and purchase bikes. So that's, that will be our third year in that program. Ghanic Adult Center, I just, again, this was the extra paper that came through, and I just wanted to highlight a couple things on here. But we have, we started to track data on our overall membership and how many people are coming into the facility. So that's the information on that and what the average age is, and some new programs that have been introduced. April and Emily do a monthly newsletter. I send it to the mayor. I'll, I think I've sent it out to the Board of Aldermen. I'll try to remember to do that, but those could be picked up at any location. Literally, the first day of the month, we have people lined up at the rec center asking for the newsletter. So we make sure that we have copies and get that out, because there's a lot of knowledge, a lot of information in there. So that's what the summer is. We actually started football practice today, so there's not really a lot of stop on that. We just keep on moving. So, any questions on our summer recap?
Alderman McClure?
I would just love to know in regards to the e-bike library at the Ghanic Center, since that's on Woodstock Avenue.
Yep.
When I was looking into getting my e-bike, I was told that there were two options. You either bike in, bike out, or you have to have a vehicle or a truck with a bike rack in order to move them due to a risk of them potentially falling. Do you see more traffic of bike in, bike out on that street, or more people coming with a larger vehicle to pick up, bring home, and then bike out?
I would have to ask April, because I'm at the rec center and I see those going out. At the rec center, it's definitely, I would say definitely more cars, you know, bringing in and out. But Ghanic Center could be different.
Yep.
Yeah, because April rides her bike there every day.
Right.
So, yeah. It's a good question. And you could follow up with April on that.
No, I definitely want to follow up with you and get those numbers for both centers if possible.
For sure.
So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Peters.
Okay.
And you have another item?
Yeah. So, because this is a asking for support, last spring, we did a pilot program for Vermont at the VAC. We took over the pool for specifically swim lessons and open swim. So I put a little bit of history on there. Because this is not in our budget, there are expenses, but there is revenue in replace of that. For the spring program, we made roughly between $8,000 to $10,000, but it was an extra expense. So, you know, and the board supported that program. So, we are now looking to do an eight-month program, which would offer swim lessons, private pool rentals, open swim, lap swim in the morning, and lifeguard certification classes. With that being said, there's going to be an expense that is not in my current budget with, but with expected revenue and offering opportunities in the off-season. It is a lot of work, and I don't have extra staff besides myself, who knows aquatics. And I know how much it meant to the community, not only to be able to offer the swim lessons, but also offer open swim for families to come. And then we see the revenue coming in also with private pool parties. So, you know, everything does come with a cost. So, we have the programming to do that, and it was very successful for that eight weeks. We would stop it before the summer, just because we already have an outdoor pool, and so we're looking at an eight-month contract with the VAC. The nice thing is our contract is already complete, because we did this in the spring and worked a couple weeks on that with Blumer and their attorney. So, I'm asking for support. I had sent this to Mary and the mayor on Thursday. Mary did have a follow-up question. I responded to that. So, that's what I'm here for, is asking for support. And any questions?
Alderman McClure?
I'd just like to say thank you for this program. This program has been fantastic. Everything I've heard about it has been nothing short of positive. I have lots of friends who work at VAC, and they are loving it. The families are loving it. I have family members who are utilizing the pools with their kids, reaching out to me, asking for sidewalks and crosswalks. It's definitely working, definitely getting the community movement. However, the fact that it's not budgeted for makes me a little nervous. I know that rec has gotten really close on their budget a couple different times in the past. I wonder, and I would like to make the motion, to refer to the Recreation Committee for further discussion. That way, we can sit down with you, sit down with your team, and really get to the meat and potatoes of this in this small group with all of us together.
So we have a motion to refer to Recreation? Alderman Davis?
It hasn't been seconded. She, I'll be glad to
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
So it's been seconded?
So, if I may.
Go ahead.
I guess my question came is, you know, the Board of Aldermen doesn't have money. So, what kind of support are you looking for? Are you looking for support? Yay, we think this is awesome? Or are you looking for dollars?
No, not dollars. It would, it's the support because it's not in the current budget. So because this is such a large amount with revenue also large coming in, right?
Yeah.
If we just add a new sports program, that's $1,000. That's, I'm not going to come to support. This is such a large amount of expense and revenue that I want it to be on record that it is supported. One of the, one of the questions I had to Mary is, do we make this their, its own separate entity, right? So, it's still, it will still be in the operational budget, but you will be able to see what was actually spent, what was actually taken. So that can kind of be separate of the operational budget. But you're right, it's not in the current budget. That's why I'm here.
All right, so we have a motion to refer. It's been seconded. Any additional comments or discussion? Alderman Gillum?
Just a concern about your timeline. If we don't do anything tonight, we'll have another two-week turnaround. Is this going to still stick with your timeline?
We just delay it. We just delay the programming. So, if, if, no, I mean, yes, it will affect this timeline, but that just means we delay when we start programming.
So you won't start until after October 2nd?
Correct. We need at least a month of marketing. I, we won't do anything without a month, because then it will not be successful. So we need at least, that's, you know, if we, if I always give the support tonight, then we would start tomorrow. And our goal, that gives us a month to market. But I need, it's, I need four to five weeks to market in order to be successful, especially for the programming piece of it.
Alderman Davis?
So, could I make a suggestion maybe to the maker of the motion, that if this board is willing to show its verbal support of this program, leave it in committee, and we can still get the finite information later, but it won't hold up the timeline of this program getting moved. So, that seems to be acceptable to the board?
And I actually like it going into board no matter what, because this isn't going to be the last time this is asked for, right? So I think this needs to be a conversation as to, is this something that the city wants to pursue as a recreational opportunity? So, I don't think it's a bad, I welcome that. And if it gets delayed a month, I'm also okay with that. You know, I would go back to VAC. So, it's, it is a large amount of money, but the revenue coming in is also there, but, and then there's creating the opportunity. So, that's where it's at. It'll just be delayed a month.
Mr. President?
So Alderman McClure was up next.
I amend.
I entertain the idea of adjusting the motion. However, just the statement of it is a lot of money, and it might not be, this will not be the first time. When this program, if this program is implemented, it will be successful. We've already seen that it's successful in this trial run. I'm just, I just find myself nervous on the budgetary aspect, just because since, since you guys are so great, and you're doing so many great things, and your budget is already so close, I think that it would be wise to just refer this motion as is. That way, we can have that conversation in committee with you there. And in that conversation as well, maybe figure out a way to help you guys get some more staff as well, aquatic-based staff. Because with it just being the two of you, and you're already on such tight margins, I just really think it would be valuable to go into committee as is. You guys are doing a great job. I want to see you guys keep doing a great job and help you support it in the committee forum.
Sure.
Treasurer Markowski?
Yeah, I would just comment that I look at numbers, and I think I raised this. I am concerned about overspending. The revenue's rate, the taxes, however, the voters said this is your budget. So I think that going to committee is a good idea to not only to say, yeah, we like this program. I think this program looks awesome. It would be great to have. But just how much are you willing to go over budget in expenses in rent? I think that discussion needs to be had.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to the Recreation Committee. It's been seconded. Additional discussion? Alderman Gillum?
I'm not necessarily against putting it in committee, but my concern is, we're holding her up 30 days for her to generate this revenue. So, you know, we're in a tight spot here, damn if we do and damn if we don't. And, you know, I'm inclined to approve it tonight and let her get out there and do the marketing show. She is open October the 2nd, because we'll be closing down our pool when?
We'll close in a week and a half.
Okay, so you're pretty close. So we're like, no pool for a month?
Correct. It's, right. But I think to Mary's point is that we, our programs, because of our increase in numbers, our increase in programming, we have gone over budget. So, but there's a reason why, right? And so I think it is important to have that conversation. Say, if we, because we're not going to drop anything, we're not going to pull anything back. So we're going to be, with just putting this on there, we're going to be over budget by $75,000, just by that. But then we'll have the revenue, of course. So I think that's a valid conversation, and I'm okay with, you know, I welcome the conversation in committee because I think it needs to be talked about.
So you're okay to lay it off?
Yes, yes. Yes.
All right, seeing no additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So Alderman Gillum will reach out and schedule the meeting. Thank you. Next is Treasurer Markowski with an update on the recent meeting of the Pension Board, and there are minutes on pages seven to eight of your packet.
Hi, how is everyone? Pension was first? Was that my first item on the agenda?
Yes, Pension Board and then Police Vehicle Lease.
Oh, okay. I had my treasurer's report. Is that on there, or that's third?
That's third.
Okay, sorry. So we had a meeting of the Pension Committee on August 9th. I included the minutes, but I'm just going to give a quick overview of that. When we talk about the city pension, remember, we're talking about the school side and the city side. The school's pension share is much larger and is still an active pension, meaning that when they hire someone at the school, they're able to get into the city pension. Now, the school side, the city side is closed to new employees. So anyone hired after 2013 goes into the VEMRs. And, so we don't have a lot of contributions, employee contributions, into the city side, which is why we struggle so much with that unfunded pension liability, which we had a pension deficit committee, so we'll have that report too. It was a really good meeting, lots of numbers, but I did want to highlight a little bit about the pension. The recommended contributions for the pension in total is about $3.9 million, 1.8 from the school, 2 million from the city. And we already know when we budget, we do not meet that recommended amount. So we're always falling short. Just, there are currently 50 participants employed at the city that are currently in the pension versus 441 in the school side. The fair market value of plan assets for the city plan is about $25 million. The board of, the school side, $71 million, with a total of about $96 million. At the end of June, the market value was about $103 million. So, sizable pension. Last year, what really hurt us was market returns. We saw a negative 15% return. So that didn't help us in terms of tackling that unfunded pension liability. Looking at the unfunded liability, the city's share is about $21 million, school's share 8.5, for a total in the pension of $29 million. So, right now, if you were looking at our pension, the school side, it's, that plan is 57% funded versus the school's plan at 90% funded, and the total plan is 78.5% funded. But, so, we go through all of that. I put the actuarial valuation on the website, if anybody is interested in looking at more of that. But the actuary meets with us once a year to go through this valuation and go through. Sometimes I get like, oh, I just am worried about the city side, but it really is the whole pension for the, for the city, so, in school, so.
Any questions on the pension? Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. I have that.
Next, you're up again with a request for approval of a lease proposal for two police vehicles, and this was emailed to everyone.
Okay. And I did email this, but I did provide a little bit of information. We've been talking most recently about police vehicles. We have six police vehicles that we're talking about. So, two of those were Chevy Equinox, two BCI detective vehicles, and those were budgeted out of the operational budget. Then, we had two Chevy Tahos that we were looking at, and those were replacement of the two vehicles that were damaged in the incident in July. So the board approved that purchase. So now, what I'm asking for tonight is to approve financing for two new outfitted Chevy Tahos. Now, these are part of the police department's regular replacement plan. So, just to kind of separate what all of those things are, we actually met at Board of Finance, approved that purchase in January. So we're finally getting, and still, it's difficult for the police, for anyone to get access to those vehicles, so it takes some time to get them. So I did some research, three proposals for, for the lease, with a three-year lease for these vehicles, and as you can see, the rates are really tight, really tight. We typically will go with the lowest rate. In this case, although it's entirely your decision, my recommendation is to go with the higher rate, which was the lowest rate at $6.09 to the highest rate at $6.17, which is a $32 increase in the annual payment. So it's, it's, it's not the lowest rate. And the reason that I am recommending that is because we used that same leasing company the last time, and we won't, we can just add it to the master lease without going through a legal review. I spoke with Attorney Le Chance on that, and just based on that, if this was a lot of money, I would never recommend going with the highest. That is the only reason, was just to forego that legal review that would take a significant amount of time if we went with a different leasing company. So that would be my request tonight, and I welcome your, hopefully.
So I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman McClure?
Treasurer Markowski, I just have a question. I have the Green Fleet policy here in front of me. I just was wondering, was of me. I just was wondering, was there any discussion had with these vehicles being in any sort of greener capacity compliant in a green fleet policy? Or do we at least have the information for them already for the inventory that is supposed to have been beginning August 2023 of all vehicles in the city fleet?
Well, I know on the, the last lease that we did, Ryan Brady was here from PD and spoke to that. But we had not formally adopted that green fleet policy, so it wasn't considered. But I will say at Department Head meeting this morning, when we were looking at what was on the agenda, we did speak about that green fleet policy and that next time we're looking at vehicles, we should bring it to the committee of, did you consider it? Why or why not? So you should be seeing that in the Board of Finance next time.
I just have a quick follow-up question. Thank you. The follow-up question being, even though this was put in place prior to the discussion of these vehicles, would we still be able to log them in this inventory as they are entering the city fleet after 2023? Just so we have a record of where exactly they fall in these stats here.
I'm not familiar with the policy. I'm not sure. The Department Heads haven't really reviewed and formally approved this policy. So I'm feeling like much of this happened before this, this policy's going to, we're going to speak to it tonight, correct? So I think the plan is, after this policy is approved, then you will see, you know, compliance with this.
Mayor Dungus?
Yeah, so I think we can take, I think what you're, if I extrapolate from what you're asking, we could probably go with everybody in one city, right? Once the policy's adopted, we can do an inventory of all the vehicles and see where they go inside that. So I think that, separate from this particular situation, that's something that we can.
Yeah, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that vehicles that had been signed on for prior could be grandfathered in.
Oh, okay. I'm not familiar with the policy. Can't remember. That meeting was a while ago.
All right, so we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. Any further discussion on suspending the rules? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So I would entertain a motion to approve the financing proposal submitted by municipal financing consultants for the purchase of the two Police Department Chevy Tahoe vehicles to be financed for three years at a rate of 6.17%, with a sales price of $126,156.50.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I'd entertain a motion to authorize the mayor, city clerk, and treasurer to execute the financing documents on behalf of the city, subject to attorney review.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good. Thank you, Treasurer Markowski.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
And then you have your July Treasurer's report.
Right. And I will be brief on this because, first of all, I noticed that the balance sheets that I sent were June. I don't know if anybody noticed that. And not July, but I did. When I was looking at the fund balance, I was like, oh, this isn't a good way to start the year. So I'll resend the July. And July reports are important, just so we start looking at what's happening, but always knowing that they are so subject to change. I am still doing so many year-end adjustments that will impact fund balance, sometimes the expense accounts and everything. So you'll see a lot of activity there, but I like to provide those reports. What I wanted to touch on tonight was a little bit of success with collections. This, when I'm looking at July, this year July compared to last July, our property tax delinquency is down about 200,000. So that's a good way to start. And water and sewer down about 146,000. So, on water and sewer, you know, we started doing shut-off. So we hadn't done that in quite a while. So I had just put together some numbers. We've done two rounds in June and July, two rounds, June and July. So in round one, we, we, we started with a list of 25 people. We, Treasurer's office works with DPW. So we ended up, we started with 25. We had seven payment agreements from that. 14 of those are paid in full. And four, four properties actually went to shut-off in, in that first round. And we really work hard to get them in. We don't want to shut your water off. We want you to come in and get a payment agreement. We really try every avenue to reach out. I believe that these properties were vacant. So we weren't able to, but, so that was the first round. The second round, starting with 24 people, only two, two properties with shut-offs, 15 payment agreements, and seven paid in full. So we're seeing a lot of good activity there. It's pretty busy. Tomorrow is a shut-off date for the first round that we just started. And I think Linda in my office was on the phone all day and writing payment agreements to avoid shut-off in the morning. So I think we ended, we started with 25. We have two that we're looking at potentially shut-off tomorrow. So, yeah. And we may possibly do one more round. And then we're getting into fall. We can't do it. But we also have some tax sale activity to be looking at. So, anyway, I'm pretty pleased with how that has worked.
Any questions for the treasurer? Alderman Barber Gallo?
Mary, with, with the agreements, where they're paying on a monthly basis, if they break that agreement, is that subject to immediate shut-off?
Yes, it is.
Does it depend on the time of year?
It will, right.
If they stop paying in, in the wintertime, you would have to think about whether or not you're going to shut this off because it might freeze everything up?
Yeah, you would really have to consider that. And we'll be ready. I mean, this was our first, starting this again. So in the spring, we plan on getting right to it in the spring. And we would just pick those up in the spring. But Linda's on the phone with people all the time about that. You know, you didn't make your agreement, get in here. So we're, you know, it's pretty busy, but she's doing a great job.
I know it's difficult, but I just was curious. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And then we have Attorney Le Chance with an option to purchase lease agreement with MKF Properties for 107 West Street.
Yes, so this is just a continuation of the previous option to purchase agreement we had with that property. It's a parking lot lease that Mark Foley has a potential option to purchase on. And this is just a renewal of that lease for another, I believe, two-year period. I apologize. I gave all my copies away and I don't have mine in front of me.
Oops.
So I'm just asking for permission for Mayor to be able to sign off on that and proceed with that document.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Excuse me, and I'll move for the approval of the agreement between the City of Rutland and MFK Properties and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll move on to reports of standing committees. First, we have Alderman Gillum with a report from the Public Works Committee meeting of August 14th. This was placed on your desk this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works Committee had a meeting on August 14th. Basically, the meeting was a comment period. It was the last of a series of three, dealing with the Route 7 and Route 4 and business for repaving project. The committee was present, Barber Gallo, McCain, and Gillum. Others present was Talbot, Hooker, Savage, McCour, and Davis. You check on your list there, you will see the amount of people that were there. And the people who are checked off on the left side, they are the ones who gave comment on the project. The VTранs and CHA consultants did a layout of the plan like they did with the previous two meetings, discussing options. Basically, I'm not going to read the whole report. Basically, it's up to the city highway commissioners to make the final decision on the proposals and picking one or two or whatever. And it was not up to the committee to make that decision, but we were the vehicle to bring people together and get the information out. So the commission, highway commissioners could hear what people had to say. So this report is for information only. There was no action taken by the committee. And I move to receive and place on file.
So that's second.
We have a motion to receive and file, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Next, I have my Committee of the Whole report from the meeting of August 15th, and this was emailed to you. The Committee of the Whole met on August 15th, 2023. Committee's members present were Alderman Talbot, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Tadio, Alderman McCann, Alderman Kupali, Alderman Barber Gallo, Alderwoman Hooker, and Alderwoman McClure. Others present, Mayor Dungus, Chief Lovett, and Treasurer Markowski. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting was for Mayor Dungus to present the transitional housing proposal that he submitted in response to a call from the Department of Children and Families. Mayor Dungus explained that there are approximately 300 families in the General Assistance Program residing in the region's motels. While there are housing vouchers available for these individuals, there is currently a lack of permanent housing. Mayor Dungus is proposing a transitional housing campus that includes wraparound services and 24/7 onsite support. The campus will be comprised of 50 prefabricated housing units and five support staff buildings. The units will be energy efficient and equipped with solar and be able to accommodate up to a six-person family. The campuses will be gated and drug and alcohol-free. The staff buildings will have a common area with resources to support residents as they pursue employment and long-term housing. Every aspect of this project, including staffing costs, will be funded by state money. Support staff positions will be filled through partnerships with graduate programs at regional universities. The development, ownership, and management of this project would be handled by partner organizations such as the Housing Trust of Rutland County and the Rutland Housing Authority. No action was needed by the committee, and the committee adjourned at 6:44 PM. Questions or comments? Next, we have Alderwoman Tadio's report from the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting of August 17th. This was emailed to you.
The topic was the emergency buy-up loans for businesses affected by flooding. Committee members present were Alderwoman McClure, Alderman McCann, Alderwoman Hooker, Alderwoman Davis, and myself, Alderwoman Tadio. Others present were Mayor Dungus, Alderman Barber Gallo, Treasurer Markowski, President Talbot, and Barbara Spalding. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. A number of small Rutland businesses were impacted by recent flooding, and a meeting was called to discuss using the Business Incentive Assistance Program buy-up loan fund to offer assistance to those businesses. President Michael Talbot suggested we could utilize the form from the COVID emergency buy-up loans and change it to fit the needs for flood relief. There was a lot of discussion about how to cultivate language to limit the amount of money loaned and limit the number of times a business could receive a loan. Most buy-up loans are between $5,000 and $10,000. Treasurer Markowski stressed that the city is not a bank and that it takes time and effort to track down loan repayments. Alderwoman Hooker asked where the money comes from, and Treasurer Markowski explained that $80,000 a year comes from a solar project in the city and that we currently have around $316,000 in our buy-up funds. Luckily, most of the businesses I contacted will likely not need to apply for this loan. However, most members of the committee decided that it would be a good idea to have a policy in place in case flooding happens again and that a business might not be able to make it without emergency relief. Alderwoman McClure made a motion for Barbara Spalding and the city attorney to review the COVID buy-up loan contract and change the language so that it would be appropriate for emergency flood relief, and report back to the Board of Aldermen with a final version for us to approve. The motion passed five to zero, and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on that motion?
Yes, I have.
Alderman Gillum?
I have one comment. I'm sorry I wasn't at the meeting because I was out of town that day. But there are probably going to be some people using, making the property vacant. They will not rebuild. I know a couple of businesses are going to do that. My concern is, if those properties stay vacant, will they turn into blight, is my concern. And maybe some of this money we should be talking about to help them either level the building, make the property either ready to be rebuilt or whatever. I think we should start talking about those things.
Okay. Alderman McClure?
I believe the discussion that was had in committee about the specifics of a building being damaged versus someone's stock inventory of a business would be that we would encourage the commercial landlord in that case to fill out one of these applications, approach the city, and then work from there. So that was the conversation that was had.
Very good. So we have a motion. It has been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Alderwoman Tadio.
Meeting adjourned at 6:06 PM.
Next, reports of representatives. We have one, Alderman Kupali with a report from the Pension Deficit Committee meeting of August 9th, 2023. This is on pages nine to 10 of your packet.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pension Deficit Committee minutes for August 9th. Attending were Alderman Larry Kupali and Alderman Adams. Absent, Alderwoman Carrie Savage. Others attending were Alderwoman, Alderwoman Annet Tadio, John McCann, Alderman Joe Barber Gallo, School Commissioners Heather Hulk, Stephanie Studley, Kathy Solsa, City Treasurer Mary Markowski, School CFO Ted Plamenos, and Eric Shait of Duport Group, and Fire Chief Bill Lovett. The meeting was held at City Hall in the upstairs changer. Chair Larry Kupali opened the meeting at 6:32 PM. Larry discussed the information provided by Eric Shait regarding the city pension deficit. The pension deficit calculations included three different cash flows, scenarios, the current schedule as well, two schedules with increased funding of $50,000 quarterly and $125,000 quarterly. The increases were presented to show the impact of increased contributions with possible funding from local option tax revenue. Eric presented the three cash flow proposals and noted that the current asset value was projected out by taking into account the future planned benefits going out of the plan and projected contributions. The three cash flow scenarios were as follows. The original plan, if the city stays with this plan, in the year 2048, the plan will run out of money and all funding would have to come, would have to be from budget or other sources. Modified plan, $50,000 per quarter, the city contributions would stop in 2051, and the remaining plan assets would be enough to cover future benefits. The plan would be 80%, 86% funded. Another modified plan that was presented was $125,000 per quarter. The city contributions would stop in 2049, and the remaining plan assets would be enough to cover future benefits. The plan would be 87% funded. Eric noted that these long-term projections that would vary year to year but provides a snapshot of what the increased contributions could do for the plan. After discussion of cash flows, Alderman McCann asked about the scenario on the current schedule where the plan would not run out of money. Eric will review the run, will review and run an additional scenario for committee to review. There were additional discussions about the use of local option tax. Kathy Solsa asked about how the additional contributions would be funded. The local option tax was approved by the voters in March and included the use for pension debt obligations. The Board of Aldermen would ultimately be making the decisions regarding the use of the local option tax. The local option tax would only be used for the city portion of the pension, not the school. Ted Plamenos pointed out that the scenarios show the impact of additional funding, whether it's 25 or $100,000 per quarter, is meaningful and would, and would be positive from a labor relations point of view. Alderman Tadio asked about how the extra funding would be invested. Eric responded that the funds would be invested into a plan with regular contributions. There was some discussion of how much the local option tax could be allocated to the pension deficit, either a flat amount or based on percentage. Larry noted the information was presented for discussion only, and the committee agreed it would be helpful to have an additional scenario where the plan would not run out of money. At this point, I would certainly say to reserve $75,000 per quarter from the local option tax to fund and cover future benefits to the pension fund to the finance committee, and I so move.
Second.
So we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 6:55 PM.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
If I may ask one question?
Yes, yes.
President Talbot. So Alderman Kupali with... President Talbot, so Alderman Cooperly with the referral to finance and Eric looking in the funding issue, what other, do I need to wait for him? Is that, or we're just, your motion stands alone?
My motion will stand alone.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could follow up with a few things here that, just a few moments to bring the attention of some resolve. July 18th, 2016, the Board of Aldermen passed a resolution and voted requesting the mayor to fill the pension in the amount of $1.352 million. And that was, that amount, I think, was determined by the actuary.
Yes.
The contribution from the local option tax of $75,000 per quarter will greatly enhance the future cost and shorten the years of contributions to the pension from 2067 to 2049. That's a terrific, terrific benefit, I feel, to the city and certainly to the city taxpayers. Let's see, the contribution would be currently in 2024, $1.478 million. Adding the local option tax will bring it to $1.778 million. And I think the contribution recommended by Newport Group was that we provide $2 million per year to shore up the, so we're getting close. We're getting close.
Alderwoman Davis?
Because I think over the years, the board has debated that the obligation that we have is unquestionable to fund the pension, but the burden on the taxpayers is significant. It's currently 13 cents on your tax rate, which would go to 20, which is significant, and can't continue that process. People cannot, taxpayers can't just continue to sustain it. So we have looked at other means of revenue to go, you know, toward the pension rather than just property taxes. So this is a great opportunity to assist the pension without having a negative impact on your property tax rate.
Very good.
So thank you.
Next, we have.
You're still on representatives?
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to bring something to the table from the representatives. It comes to my attention that some taxpayers are having trouble finding the minutes from the different organizations that we represent from this board. I would like to make a policy change that we actually electronically file the documents with the clerk's office and put it on our website so people can find it. I think that would be the best way to go before they would go to the organizations and get the documents. But I'd rather have it go to the city website so people can actually look up the minutes from like the Marble Valley Transit, the Solid Waste District, the Transportation Council, some of those others. We used to get those all the time here, and I think I agree with the taxpayers that it should be in our bailiwick or in our house where they can find it quicker. And I think if everybody's okay with that policy change, we'll do it.
So I think maybe this is better for new business rather than reports of representatives.
So you want this on new business?
And I do wonder if this is best discussed with either the mayor or refer to committee because there is work involved in doing that, and we don't have like a web developer on staff to necessarily build this out. So we'd want to make sure that if we are going to make a policy like this, that we figure out what's involved and then we do it right. But I agree, this is a good thing. We want to make this information more accessible. So under new business, would you make a motion to refer?
Sure, we'll do that. Thank you.
Reports of select committees. We have Alderwoman Tadio with a report of the Environmental Sustainability Committee meeting of July 26th and the green fleet policy. This is on pages 11 to 12 of your packet, and the green fleet policy was emailed to you.
The topic was the green fleet policy, a solar update, and our mission statement. Committee members present were Alderman Barbara Gallo, Alderman McCann, and myself. Others present were Mayor Dungus, Alderman Talbot, Alderwoman McClure, Treasurer Markowski, Kim Peters, and Tyler Dolan. The meeting was called to order at 5:31 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to finalize our green fleet policy, finalize our mission statement, and get an update on our solar plans. Alderwoman Tadio explained the intention behind the green fleet policy is to take an inventory of all city-owned vehicles and equipment, and then when the vehicles are up for replacement, the department head or person in charge will seriously consider more fuel-efficient or electric alternatives and options. Tyler spoke about the equipment that the Recreation Department uses and discussed the company Toro and what they offer for electric equipment. He stressed the need for the same production value if replacing mowers and weed whackers. The Recreation Department is working on a pilot program in the downtown for the city's beautification program where they will use some electric equipment because it's cheaper and pollutes less. The cost for replacing equipment will come out of the line item for the equipment replacement fund. Alderman Barbara Gallo suggested that grant money might be available to help the city offset some of the costs. Alderwoman Tadio stressed that this is a fact-finding mission and that the first stage is gathering an inventory of the vehicles so that when the time does come for replacement, that we can make informed decisions. Once we have a record of all the city-owned vehicles and when the vehicles are up for replacement, then the city department heads can consider a more environmentally friendly option. Mayor Dungus gave an update about our solar plans. The city has applied for a $4,000 municipal energy resilience program grant. We also applied for the Energy Efficiency and Block grant and are waiting to hear back. We finished our mission statement, which is primarily for informational purposes, and we will post this on our website so that people know what the Environmental Sustainability Committee is and what type of work we complete. A motion was made to adopt the Rutland City Green Fleet policy. The motion passed three to zero, and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to adopt the green fleet policy, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Oh, meeting adjourned at 6:07 PM.
All right, moving on to petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications. We have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. This brings us to unfinished business. Seeing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Gillum?
I'm not sure how I want to put this. What committee would this go into? General?
RIT.
RIT.
RIT's not a committee anymore.
Sorry, just expanded that one for environmental, right?
General would be a good one.
General, okay. Because I'm not sure where the minutes, just a question to the clerk. Where are the minutes that we give you from the committees? Those go in the system into the website?
Yes.
So we could use that same platform for all these other things that we represent? We would do the same way?
Yes.
I think that's a.
Yes.
Okay, so let's just put it in committee. We could talk about it and then figure out how we're going to do it. But I really think we need to put it under our house so the taxpayer can find these reports quicker than going to the agencies. So I move this to general committee, the reporting process from all the representatives that we are on, all the boards that we're on.
Excellent. All right, so we have a motion to refer this to general committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.